Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to have a little change in our agenda. We're going to move up item number eight, which is... Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. So we will move on to item number three A, which is going to be our introduction of our new staff and reports on the opening day of school. And I know Deb Cavaci is starting us off. Come on up.
Where would you like me to go? Right here? Right here?
Wherever you... Over there, so we can put everybody on camera, right? Is that okay? Or you want to sit down?
Save the spot.
Yeah.
Do you want to be seen or heard, right? You can be seen there or...
We can do both right there.
Okay. There are two new staff members that we welcomed this year. They're over there. We have Amanda Serino, who's grade two. Why don't you stand up? Amanda, stand up. There you go. And Megan Anderson, who is shared with STEM. So there's Megan. She's an art student at two elementary schools. Want me to keep going about the report?
Sure, the opening of school.
Okay, opening of school. Well, today we were complete. Preschool started today, so preschool starts a couple of days later, so the preschool staff can go to the other two elementary schools as well as Monroeell to help support those children as they enter kindergarten from last year. So they started today. As with all the schools, I think probably our biggest challenge was trying to make sure that everybody stayed cool on the first day and today. So we had what we called cooling stations, and we had six different locations in the building for each grade level to be able to go to. So music and art combined towards the end of the day, and they went into the music room, and they shifted between the music room and the library, and they kind of swapped places with the grade four and five. They did some science activities and some PE-type activities between those two spaces. Third grade were actually in one classroom together, and when I went in, I wasn't sure what they were doing, so I asked. They were all with Chromebooks, and they were beginning some coding activities, so they know more about that than I do at this point. But they were working on that. Grade two, Amanda was in one of the special ed rooms. They were all jammed in there, all of second grade, and they were doing science, and then they went into writing. So they were all in one spot. And kindergarten and first grade also, at the end of the day, they got together as well and did activities. So we had a really good start. It's been challenging, but it's been interesting to try to keep everybody cool, and so we've had a great start. And Mr. Lazar, it's your turn.
Welcome back to school. It's nice to see you all. We've had a wonderful start at Steppeney. I have to give the bus company All-Star a lot of credit. They did some mondo work early on to get everybody in and out, and the first two days of school were phenomenal. I mean, everybody got where they were supposed to go. My secretary, Diane, is over here to my left, did a lot of the work, so she gets a lot of the kudos as well. But like Deb said, it's been a little bit warm, but we've made do in the library, in the upper computer lab, and some of the rooms have air conditioning. So people went as they needed to, went cooled off, they had cooling stations in the cafeteria, and then they went back. But more importantly, I would like to introduce my two new staff members. Mrs. Jen Silva, who teaches art, and she also goes over to the free school. And our former intern from last year, who is now our second grade teacher, Ms. Mackenzie Yuska. It's always thrilling to hire an intern. So thank you. Have a great year. Mrs. Kusicki.
Last year I didn't have any new staff members. This year, we have a wonderful crew. We have seven new staff members. Well, new at Fawn Hollow, one of them Caitlin Walsh came from Steppeney, so she's not here this evening, and another couldn't make it. So you are meeting five of the wonderful new staff members at Fawn Hollow. We have Amanda Friedlander, who's teaching first grade, Sarah Provenzano in kindergarten, Kim Boguski, who's teaching third grade, Megan Stansfield, who's teaching fourth grade, and Alyssa Carrigas, our new guidance counselor. And so this kind of comes from all of us, all right? But I'm going to start by saying that I am so proud to be the principal of Fawn Hollow School, such a kind and caring school. At the end of the year, one of my staff members gave me a sign that said, "We rise by lifting each other," and we've had so many examples of that this year. Our new staff members have all said how welcomed and prepared they felt as a result of the advanced work done by central office staff and their colleagues. Our Fawn Hollow staff kicked off our second day of our mindfulness training, learning how to incorporate mindfulness into our own practice, and we added strategies now how to carry that over to our students. Two days later, in the last few minutes of our PD on Wednesday afternoon, the whole staff went out to the front sidewalk. When even there were so many other things to do, we went out to the sidewalk and with chalk, we wrote welcoming messages to our students. Honestly, it was the most uplifting thing. I think a lot of us went back into the school with tears, because the next morning, smiling students were greeted with messages such as, "You are loved. You are special. Have fun, be kind, be you. You are a star. Share. Dream big. Believe and achieve. You are the reason we are here." Students came in and hugging their teachers and friends as they reconnected, eager to start the new year the next morning. Kindness was introduced again this morning as we listened to our morning announcements, where we learned about the word of the week. And this year, the whole district is participating in the Word of the Week program. And as students boarded their buses this morning, or this afternoon, there was Mr. B. out in the hallway saying, "How was your day today?" And we heard so many, "Fantastic." And you know, that doesn't just happen. It's all of us working together to ensure that each student has what they need to become their very personal best. And we're off to a great start. Look forward to a terrific year. Thank you. Oh, and I introduce Mr. Chefflin.
Thank you, Mrs. Kusicki. I want to make sure you guys do. They're right here anyway, and I want to make sure that I introduce Megan as well. So thank you. Thanks for letting us be here this evening and address the board to talk about the opening of school. Before I jump in about the opener, I do want to introduce new staff to Jackie Hollow. And you've met Megan already, but I'd like to introduce Megan again, if that's all right. Megan Anderson, who shares Megan with Deb at Monroeell. Megan is at STEM, teaching with us. And we have three other staff members that are here that are joining us this year. Samantha Jennings, teaching math in eighth grade. Amanda Kirk. You know, we should all come with applause. Amanda Kirk, joining us as school counselor. And Olivia Prescott, new again, but really returning. Olivia had been with us away, had moved, and we were very fortunate, returned to the area and is joining us again. It's great to have you back. And the opening of school, really our opening started about mid-August. We have our, what has become an annual event, our technology workshops, and over the course of the 16th and 17th of August, we had well over 200 people involved at both campuses with our technology workshops. So we're very pleased that these continue to be well-attended. The following week, we welcomed our incoming sixth grader students that were new to the Jackie Hollow STEM campus with an open house and locker orientation. We had over 80% of those children and families come by. It was a great day. I need to thank the PTO and the Monroe Youth Commission. They sponsored an ice cream social that midday for the students and families that were there. So it was really, it's a fun time, it's a great time, it's an opportunity to relieve some anxiety if students have them, and certainly get to know the school a little bit better before they come in for their first day. And then our opening days were really wonderful. I echo the sentiments of the principals. We had our challenges with the weather, but you know, the teachers and the kids really rise to the occasion. We shared the spaces that are cooler or air-conditioned, and you know, took the water breaks, and really everybody did a great job, made do, and worked well together to make that successful. I had two comments. I had a young sixth grader, a very nice young lady, come up to me after the first day, and she said, "I am thrilled school started. I was getting so bored at home." So that was nice to hear. And a lovely new family to Monroe, and I have to share this because it really has to do with the whole community, raved about the town of Monroe, the community, how welcoming the community was, and then could not say enough about the school and visiting the schools in town. So I thought that was important to share with everybody, because I think it speaks volumes about Monroe, our schools and our communities. So it was a great way to open. So I hope everybody has a good year.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to come and speak. I'm Jay Greenwood. I'm new. New principal of MASCIC. I have a few new staff, and then some staff who changed positions, so I asked if they wanted to come, and they virtually all came, so that speaks volumes of what they think about the school, too. Joe Corino's joining us in CTE. Joe definitely hit the ground running this year. We did a lot of renovation, painting and cleaning down the tech ed area, and he was here weeks this summer helping us organize that before he was officially started, so I can give a special round of applause myself for that. So thank you. He was a strong guy. Thanks, Joe. I had Alyssa Kinsel in Special Education. And Chris Quinlan's joining us as a long-term sub for Meg Bartosik, who had a baby and everything was safe, and she found her baby. And then we had some moving around of staff, which I again asked if they wanted to come, and most of them came. So we had a retirement, which allowed us to have a guidance position open, which Trish Pegel moved down to. I have Spanish, so we brought Carolyn Nieto in in Spanish. And then we had an art position to fill, and Dana Maranick filled that position. And we're fortunate to have a couple other, I think, high-profile positions at the high school that we filled to. Our math intervention two-year, we filled with Tim Canty, and we hired a new security guard this summer, too, Russ Gleylen, who has a lot of experience. So we're happy to have both those people along. Aren't here, but I just want to say their names, because they've already made an impact on the school. In terms of opening, I think it was a success. It was definitely the first one I've run, so I felt really good about it. The freshman social went great. Fresh Fest, we had well over 200 kids there and over 40 staff, and that's on a summer day. The social the evening before that, we had, you know, cookies and chips and had a DJ, and we had a great turnout. We had 140, 150 kids show up to that, which I think is great, again, four or five days before school starts. On opening day, the buses ran and everybody got fed, so that's a positive in a high school. And at the end of the day, I asked the staff if they wanted to come out and wave goodbye to the kids and the buses on the way out. I did have a fear I'd be alone. I was not. I'd say virtually everybody came out, and it was, I think it was really, really touching. The teachers were lined up waving to the kids as the buses drove off, and the kids were waving at the buses. And it really set a nice tone, I think, for the year, which leads us into this Friday. We have our first football game, and we've invited all the freshmen to attend the game free of charge to try and bring them into the fold and really show them what the school spirit is about. So, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And we will let you go, so you don't have to stay for our meeting, but you're more than welcome to stay, but please feel free to go.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And thank you so much for coming out at night on your own time to meet with us. Report of the chairman. Last Wednesday was the convocation. Myself and Jerry both attended the convocation to welcome all the staff back. It went really well, I thought. It was a great morning, so that's pretty much all I have for that. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. I guess we'll be getting our MASCIC ones back in a couple of weeks. Does anybody else have any reports this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. Wow, we are moving right along. All right, hearing none, we will move on to our report of our superintendent.
Thank you very much, Donna. And I just wanted to thank all the principals and all the staff for a great opening and also helping out with today, which was not the ideal day with the heat, but due to the efforts of the principals and the staff and the students, really, it ended up being a good day for everybody because of the positive contribution that everybody made. So thank you to everybody, both for today and for this very smooth opening. So the first thing that we have in the superintendent's report is related to a folder that you have in front of you, and this is something we review each year with the board members. And Donna and I took a look at this last week, and one of the, there are a lot of good resources in here, and we would encourage you to take a look at all of the resources, but there is one we wanted to highlight with you tonight, just so we could take a look at some of the most important information. That's this green book that's in your folder, and it's called "The Roles and Responsibilities of Board of Education Membership." It's created by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed. And what we did is we just highlighted some of the pages from within that book, and Donna and I are just going to walk you through that. So we're just going to take a minute and create some space. So within this book, if you go to the third page, there's a section in there called "The Responsibilities of Board of Ed Members." And one of the sections that we highlighted from there, and I believe it's towards the end of that passage.
Yep.
One of the things it talks about is the deliberate division of authority between the local Board of Education and other governmental bodies. It's intended to make school boards directly responsible to the people. Boards are unique, Boards of Ed are unique, in that you're elected by the people to represent the interests of the school district. You're a direct response, or a direct line from the community to our children. And sometimes this gets confused, because there are other boards in town, and sometimes people think, you know, that there's a hierarchy of these, and we need to have a good working relationship with all of the boards. But at the end of the day, you're responsible and accountable to the citizens in the town first and foremost.
Right. And we're also accountable to the state, too. So our roles as Board of Education members is also sort of almost a direct line to the State Department of Education, so it's not just the local citizens, but we also have responsibilities directly to the state of Connecticut, which makes us a little bit more unique than other Boards of Education, which their sole focus is just the town. We sort of have to balance the town and the state, because we're kind of both.
And to Donna's point, I mean, you're really implementing state law is what you're doing as a board member, which is an interesting thing, unique to being a Board of Ed member. Then on page five, the section's about an effective Board of Ed member meets the legal requirements. And within this one, section one here, there are two number ones in this, by the way. It's the second number one in this whole area. Board members require sometime to become fully informed about the work of the board, and then board members must continually seek to enhance their knowledge and skills in the interest of serving their school districts. And one of the things we did, I think it was during Jim's time, adding professional development sessions.
Yes.
Probably Jim's second or third year, something like that.
Yes.
We've continued that for each successive year since. So we add those training meetings on an ongoing basis for a reason. We do that with staff, we do that with administration, we do that with the board for a reason. We're continually learning, we're continually expanding our knowledge of the laws and the policies that govern our work, and it makes us better at what we do.
Correct. And those things change, like as George will say in policy, we're continuously, every legislative session, updating our policies, because the state has made changes. But in addition to, to be really effective as Board of Education members, not that we have to be experts in all aspects, but we should have, when we're looking at, you know, special education budget while it's our budget time, understand the workings of how special education work. We don't have to be an expert, but we need to know, since we are making budgetary decisions based on all these things, how that, you know, how those work. And that's why we continuously are having professional development here at our meetings, and we talk about what type of professional development we want to see, and that's directly because we do want to enhance our skills and our knowledge to make better informed decisions.
In all ways, if there are topics that come up where you want to learn more, just let us know, and we'll be sure that we develop sessions to respond to that need.
Yes.
And then number four, board members should make, should not make promises or commitments on educational issues unless they are fully discussed and acted upon in the board meeting. And really, the only way that a board functions is in this environment. No one of us is really empowered to act as an individual. It's a board collectively that's empowered to make decisions.
Right. Right. It's a collective members of nine members. No one in person is more important than the other eight people. Everybody, we are a board that acts as one, as opposed to individually, so.
And then the last one, and this one's highlighted, because it's an important one, we thought. And the most important function of the Board of Education is to improve student achievement. This is done by developing, adopting, monitoring, and evaluating the effects of board policy. The board develops and adopts policies to provide a broad guide for action by school personnel, so that schools may operate efficiently. Board members should recognize that their responsibility is not to run the schools, but to see that the schools are well-run.
Yeah. And we put this one, just highlighted this one, because, you know, through our policies, and we just did our whole goals, our goals for the next three years when we had the work session, session, excuse me, in back in May, to put that together. We will have a follow-up to that in October, where we're going to get back together and have another work session, because the administrative team has gone forth and done action plans to the goals and the mission that we put up together. So we're going to have another working session with that, but this is really important. I mean, that is, at the end of the day, what we are achieving and trying to achieve, our student achievement, educating the whole student, getting them into wherever their desired next step is after they leave us, whether that's college, trade school, military, whatever that is, and always looking at that end goal, so that we are providing the good quality education to our students. And so those are just the highlights, but obviously, everybody's in, everything is in here, so please look over this. You know, we give this out every year, sort of just a refresher to everybody on what our roles and responsibilities are as Board of Education members. Anybody have questions on that?
I think this, the board already exemplifies a lot of what's in here.
Oh, absolutely.
And I would say that the section that talks about being part of a team is something that I've experienced here, since I've been on the board since 2009, and it's only gotten better, the collaborative nature of this board, which is not, maybe not common on other boards, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And to one of the points that Donna had made earlier, too, the part of the feedback that we got from Donna and others about the workshop that we had done with the administrative team is that was a positive experience for everybody in collaborating together, administrative team and Board of Ed. So I think with the next workshop, part of what we're hoping is only to expand upon that and provide more collaborative experiences with all of us working together.
Yep.
All right. And next item that I have for you is a summer work update, and just to keep you informed about some of the things that we're working on over the summer. Firstly, I wanted to thank Gabby and custodial staff. They really did an outstanding job getting the buildings ready. They look great. There was a lot of significant work that was done over the summer. Some of the tasks included the Monroeell tank removal, went very smoothly, very efficiently. If you go by the front of Monroeell, all the topsoil's in, the grass is growing, and we have a new cement sidewalk there. We didn't even know that the work had been done. We had some drain repairs within MASCIC, where you might have remembered in the week of review that I sent to the board members, there was a big hole in the floor of the main hallway. Very exciting for a new principal, by the way, to see that just prior to the opening of the school. But the staff did an amazing job, as they always do. Sean Cornet, one of our many very talented custodians, did the tile work. If you go out there, the only way you can tell that there's tile replacements is the sheen of the tile is way brighter than the older stuff, because it hasn't been walked on. Other than that, it looks phenomenal. And that was, that part was handled in-house. The plumbing was done by an outside contractor, but well-managed, well-done, and it was addressing a problem we've had for many years, where there's flooding going into the auditorium, and makes the carpet smell, and we're looking to replace those now, and we feel better about replacing that, because we think the flood issue is now behind us. So that was a big project. And we also, the Steppeney Elementary School gym, I believe that was original paint to that gym. That was repainted this summer and looking much, much better as a result. So those are just some highlights. Again, many thanks to Gabby and the custodial staff, they really did a great job. And next topic I have for you is current enrollment, and that's the chart that I laid out. There's handouts for everybody, and I also put it up here on the big screen for you, too. And what we wanted to do was give you a overview, a global overview of the pre-K through 12 numbers. At this point in the year, the numbers are very much in flux. We have new families registering, we have families moving out, we have some that have moved and haven't declared that they're moving to another residence or another school. So giving the school-based numbers is a little softer, but we thought at this point, we'd give it this overall feedback. The interesting thing, you'll see right away, the red is the projection from Malone McBrune. And one of the things that all the demographers will tell you, and it holds true in this, is that the further you go out on a projection, the less accurate it is, because you don't have current information. And you see that holds true here. The first couple of years, very tight, next year, looser, a divide of 73 students, the next year, a divide of 109, and then the third year, a difference of 227 students. Jim and John, in the years 2016 and 2017, both made similar remarks in those years. They both said, "You know, I think we're starting to see a diversion. We're starting to see a change in pattern. It really takes you three years to get to a pattern." So at this point, I think we can say with confidence, there's a pattern here. And the pattern is, this is no longer a district of decreasing enrollment. This is a district that has static enrollment. We're staying about where we were three years ago, give or take. So that is a shift in dynamic that really is, you know, becomes pretty apparent from this visual. So any questions on this information so far?
So this is a five-year study?
This was, correct.
A five-year-old study?
Correct.
And how far out did they forecast?
They generally project out five years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we due for another study?
We are. It was one of the things we talked about in the last board meeting in July, and at that point, the board decided not to do it. I am talking with CES. They're working with Malone McBrune to see if they can get a discount, and it was something later on, I would bring back to the board and see if at a discounted price, it's something you'd be interested in. Just so you know, you know, all the demographers, it is not an absolute science. None of them, you will never, ever see a red line and a blue line together. If any demographer could do that, they would be making money hand over fist. It is an inaccurate science. What it's about is having some projection as to where we're going, as opposed to our collective speculation. That's really what the demographic study is all about, is trying to give some projection as to where you're going. And as you can see, in the first couple of years, that was pretty, pretty close to the actual enrollment.
Right. In July, we talked about it was a $7,500 cost to have it redone, and we thought that that was really high for the inaccuracy of how, you know, this does, but like Jack said, he's trying to get that priced down and work on with CES to get a better price on that, and if he can get that, then he'll come back with, to us on it, and see if we proceed then. Alan?
This is just a regression formula. Isn't it something like, I don't know, like some students could take on, like as a team or...
You know, I wish, I'm not going to claim to be a demographer, but in having watched their presentations from a few demographers, and some do it better than others, there are a lot of sophisticated mechanisms that they use, and there are a lot of data sources that they use that, in my view anyways, aren't typical places you would look to put things together. And it is, the other part of it that I think gets somewhat complex is when you get into the assimilation of that data. I mean, really, at that point, you're getting into qualitative statistics, qualitative measurement, you know?
That's all it is.
And that's, you know, I think...
So I think Richard Canfield used to do it for the district. If I, if anyone...
We had Peter Pratt up for a long time.
Before Peter Pratt?
No, I don't know.
No, I don't know. That's before my time.
I remember him, but I don't know if he did that or not.
I thought he did.
Yeah, I think.
But that was a while ago, obviously.
I mean, the other thing we could do, too, is we could always invite in a few different ones, so that you can get some feedback from different demographers about what they do and the differences in their approach. That might be, you know, might be worthwhile, to provide some additional understanding of what's available.
Yeah.
All right. So, any other questions on that at all? All right. Next item that I have for you is regarding the insurance committee. And right now, we have our first meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 27th, at 7:00 PM at Central Office. On that meeting agenda, Rob Fitzpatrick from Brown and Brown will present an overview of our current health insurance plan, as well as the state partnership plan. And just so everybody knows, that meeting is, will be just for the members that have been invited. We have three board members, we have the liaison from Town Council, we have a Board of Finance member, we have the First Selectman, we have President and Vice President from the Teachers Union, we have all of the presidents from the remaining associations. So it's a fairly sizable group. But because the conversations related to matters, matters related to negotiating, potentially, it wouldn't be a public session. So it's going to be the individuals that are within the room, and I think, I think we'll find it to be a positive process. I think Rob's a very good presenter, very knowledgeable. And as we go through it, as, as groups or individuals want to bring in other individuals to share information, absolutely something we can do, so we can all understand the intricacies of the various plans and make an informed decision moving forward. Regarding NIASC, we had conducted some work over the summer. As you might recall, there are new standards and a new process for NIASC. We are coming up on a collaborative conference in the fall of 2019, where NIASC representatives come to meet with us here in Monroe. And then in the fall of 2021, there's what's called a decennial visit. That is more in line with the 10-year visit that we've seen in the past. And.
Sorry to interrupt you, but can you just explain NIASC? Because, like, I was on the board at the time that that was done. Alan was, too, and George, I think, was, but I think everybody else would not know what that is.
Absolutely, you got it. NIASC is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and they are a group that provides certifications to high schools and colleges, and feedback about the quality of their work. So it's an important certification, it provides an important stamp of approval for the work that goes on, and also feedback to administration and teachers about strengths and areas to look at moving forward. So in that work, as we're looking towards the next review, they do these reviews every 10 years. We met with the chairperson of the Bethel NIASC Committee. They just went through the new process. There's very few districts that have used the new standards and the new accreditation process. So we invited Bethel to come out and meet with our team. It was very informative. They provided a lot of good, detailed information of what they had gone through in their process to date. We asked a lot of questions of them. The new process is quite a bit different than the old one. In the preparation for this collaborative visit, we asked them about how much time was needed. All of their preparation time was done through release time, where they release teachers to come and meet together and prepare these reports. We asked them if they had sufficient time. They felt that they did have sufficient time to prepare. We asked them if they would do anything differently next time out. Their feedback to us was, in your, you have five committee chairs who write five major reports that contribute to the overall report. They felt they needed more time with those five committee chairs to create a more cohesive overall report for the school. Because they had, ended up having five different writing styles, and they felt that that really didn't provide as cohesive a model as they would like to have provided to NIASC. So that was good information for us. Based on that information, we foresee little or no need for, like, a half-day schedule during this year, preparing for next. Moving into the 2021, we do see fewer, the less need for half-days, but we're not sure if that's something we need to have again. 10 years ago, when this was done, there was a half-day, I think it was every single month, if I remember right, Joe?
Yeah, I think for half a year.
Yeah. And what we're hearing from Bethel at this point was, is that within this new process, that's not really needed to fulfill it. So, the nice thing is, we've got a good relationship with them. As they proceed forward, we'll find out, again, from their successes in areas where they felt they could have done better, and use that to help inform what we do as we proceed forward.
Great.
And then regarding vape detectors, we did some work on this over the summer also. And as you might recall, we were asked to look at whether or not vape detectors would be something that would be advantageous for us in addressing vaping concerns with our students at the high school level. And the information that we found out is that the cost per bathroom is about $3,000 for a boys' room, and then another $3,000 for a girls' room. So to pilot it, it'd be $6,000 for a pair of bathrooms. That does not include software licensing, which is an annual cost right now of $150. You know, once you're locked in, there are, the only vendor that provides this, realistically, that cost is probably going to go up, because it's their way of, you know, keeping you on the hook. The feedback we got from West Genesee High School, we gave them a call over the summer, and they've had this in use, Joe, what did they say? Was it for a year?
I think it was just over a year, yeah. We called a number of schools, and it was interesting, the, the people from the, I think the company was called FlySense, they gave us a bunch of phone numbers, but they gave us phone numbers to IT people, people who were installing these things, and not so much the end users. So, yeah, we finally, throughout this, we couldn't get, we couldn't talk to any, you know, high school or middle school administrators, because that's the people who are going to be dealing with it. Jake, Mark, Julia. And finally, we could get ahold of the, the folks at West Genesee High School.
West Genesee High School, yeah. And the feedback we got from them was that they really were not effective during passing times. What happens with these things is they take a reading of humidity in the air. They read a fluctuation from the humidity, which vaping is, it's a vapor, it's a liquid vapor. It would sense that, it then sends a text, an email out to administrators that it sensed this vaping, and then somebody's got to make it to that bathroom to take a look. What they found during passing times is, with so many kids in the bathrooms, they couldn't make sense of the readings. And even if they could make sense of the readings, by the time they get there, with 20 kids in the bathroom, okay, who's the one vaping? It didn't give them any good information about who the individual was. The only thing they found it to be beneficial for was if a student chose to go into a bathroom during class time, that individual could be pinpointed, because like us, they have video cameras outside the bathrooms. They would see a reading, they would see the individual on the camera, and they could go back and retrace it. But given that feedback, our feeling is that it's, the technology's not quite ready for primetime yet. So, another piece that we wanted to look, look at, is Joe's been in contact with the Milford Public Schools. They're installing these this year, and we're going to wait and see how it works out for them, what feedback they have. If it's similar feedback, it's probably not worth the investment. If it's good feedback, and you know, okay, we figured out some aspects that, that helped us to hone in during passing times, then maybe it's something worth more discussion. But it is a pretty hefty investment to, to make it happen.
Are they just piloting in Milford, or are they, they going full installation?
I think they were going, I think they were going in, yeah.
Right, that's what I thought the article said, too, yeah.
Alan.
What are we doing about vaping, right now?
Well, one of the things that was done is the discipline policy was changed. So this year, what happens is, if a student is found vaping, and we're having a conversation about this today, they, they get in-school suspension right away. So that is a change as a deterrent. We've also had some conversations, too, about what we can do from an educational perspective. And that's something that we need to continue to work on during the year, in terms of getting the information about, out about how this is harmful, and from an educational perspective, help children understand that this is not something that's going to help you, it's going to be to your detriment, short-term and long-term. So that's another piece as well, that we'll continue to work on.
Interesting, interestingly, too, with our kids last year, it was, when we met with our student governments to try to address some of the stuff, they were the ones that were saying, "No." Because it was, it used to be, it was one detention, we changed it to three detentions, and they were, they, they were the ones that said, "No." You know, because they don't like it. They don't like walking into the bathroom and experiencing that. And they were like, "No, it needs to be, you know, a suspension to, to be more of a deterrent." That was the feedback we also got. We meet with, or I, I used to meet with all of the principals in the Southwest Conference, and that seemed to become more of the standard, is that people were getting a lot, were getting more aggressive with the discipline, with, with it, to try to curb it. It's this problem all over, all over the place.
Is there any more, any parts of the building more prone to it than others?
This bathroom over here.
Okay.
Right, and that intersection over here is probably, and it kind of makes sense, it's the, it's kind of furthest away from the main office. It's kind of off the beaten path a little bit.
So that's my report. Any questions on anything that was shared?
Could you tell us a little bit about the numbers in kindergarten?
Yeah, specifically Stepney L?
Sure.
All right, yeah. So, you might recall that at the end of last year, John and I, and then I, and then I talked to you in summer about, we were able to take two existing positions and add two positions at the elementary level. One was added at Monroe L, another one was added at Fawn Hollow. It was a very good thing that we did that. It helped those numbers significantly. One of the places that was on the edge was the Stepney kindergarten, and those numbers continue to be on the edge right now. We have three, three kindergartens there. One's 21, one, another one's 22, and the third one's 22. So those numbers are a little bigger than we'd like them to be. But really, at this point, those, there were a number of enrollments that came in late, and making a change and reorganizing classes at this point really wouldn't be in the best interests of, of our kids. So, you know.
What are you doing to address it?
Right now, you know, we've got good people in the classroom, and, you know, rule of thumb is 21 is about the right spot, you know? So we're, we're slightly over that. It's not, you know, a big difference. You know, the time that I spend in the elementary classrooms, you know, it's a place that I think we can make work, and we can still provide good instruction to kids. I think we would have to get to the point, if, you know, we had more than another student or two enroll, I think we would have to have a conversation at that point about, we're not going to take any more Stepney Elementary School. And at that point, we'd look at, you know, having new enrollees come to another building. I think that's another alternative for us that, you know, would help with that situation as well, moving forward. Hopefully, we won't have new enrollments.
Do you do anything, like, with the reading teacher, like, co-teaching?
We could, I mean, part of our intervention model is, we're always looking at the needs of students. So, you know, as we're looking at those needs, that would dictate the amount of support going into the room. So, you know, there, too, where, as we have those supports going in, those would be things we would use, no matter what size. Bruce, did you want to, it's more?
Yeah, we do have the reading team going in, in the morning, and then they go in the afternoon with their math support. So they kind of help out the teacher interventionists, the professional, so two out of the three classrooms. And the third one, I provided my intern, at the beginning of school, anyway. So there's always a second, a second at all, then the reading team comes in as well.
Reading team comes in every day?
Yes.
Nice.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on. We have no old business and no new business. Does anybody have anything else, I guess, before we could move to adjournment? All right, hearing none, all in favor. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you.